Good afternoon, everyone. The meeting of the City of Sacramento Housing Authority and City Council will come to order. Would the clerk please call the roll to establish a court?
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Here.
Councilmember Laloe?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Here.
Vice Merchantier?
Here.
Councilmember Geta is expected momentarily. Councilmember Jennings?
Here.
Councilmember Vang?
Here.
And Mayor Steinberg?
I'm here. Thank you very much. Let us all rise for the pledge of allegiance. I will lead us here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everyone. For those of you watching at home, this is a meeting of the Sacramento Housing Authority. As you know, we may know, the city council sits concurrently at times as the housing authority, the same members, obviously, and with the same authority. But we meet separately to focus on housing issues. Although tonight, we meet as a full city council and we continue with housing issues. So today is the housing authority. And of course, our housing authority is the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. And they will help guide us through today's agenda. So let us begin with the discussion calendar. We've got three items. And one is the opportunity for a significant grant through a state law that was my bill. So I'm looking forward to hearing this one. I'll turn it over to LaChelle Dozier, our executive director of the Housing and Redevelopment Agency.
Okay. So we'll get started with item number one. Mindy, did you need to call that item number up?
I can. Item number one is Marisol Village Project: Application for Affordable Housing and Sustainable Communities Grant to Marisol Village Block D.
As you know, we've been working on this project for quite some time. So there are a series of phases, five phases. Three have been funded. And so we're coming forward to talk about the next two phases. And I have here, the presenter is Victoria Johnson for my staff. It's been doing an outstanding job to give you an update as to our progress and where we are. Victoria?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, council members, staff, members of the public. I will provide a brief overview of the project for those who may not be familiar with it, and then ask for council approval of the application on behalf of Block D. The Marisol Village site plan includes five blocks, as LaChelle mentioned, A, B, C, D, E. Blocks A, B, and E are already under construction. The planning for this project began all the way back in 2010. In 2016, SHRA was successful, together with the city, in obtaining HUD grant funding through the Choice Neighborhoods Initiative Program. The demolition began in 2018. Entirely new infrastructure, everything from the storm sewers to the streetlights, was installed beginning in 2019 and completed in 2020. And the residential construction began in mid-2020. Looking at the plan, just in case anybody is not familiar, it's Richards at the top and 12th Street at the lower right. And the project basically is bounded by 12 Dos Rios, Richards, and the new Richards would be running across the northern edge of this site if someday Richards is reconstructed. So the project, the Choice Neighborhoods Project includes not only residential improvements, but also significant community improvements. Altogether, there is over $310 million worth of work that will be completed. Of this, over $200 million has already been secured. Altogether, there are about 500 new residential units. It may be 499. There are 227 already under construction. The first residents will be moving into new apartments as early as January 2022. All former Twin Rivers residents will have the option to return. And if anybody has not recently driven by, I urge you to do so to see how much progress has been made. There are transit and mobility improvements throughout the River District. There will be a brand-new light rail station. We're calling it the Dos Rios Light Rail Station. New pedestrian sidewalks, bicycle lanes, car share, bike share. There will be a new bus route. Bus Route 11 will be expanded, and there will be new bus shelters. There will be two public parks. The beautiful Marisol Village Park at the center of the community, as well as the River District Park that Councilmember Harris, together with city staff, is working diligently on to create a really beautiful sports park along D Street. There will also be 850 trees. SHRA is collaborating with the Sacramento Tree Foundation. About half of those trees will be within Marisol Village, and the other half will be throughout the neighborhood. There is comprehensive community engagement and workforce development activities underway so that residents can become engaged and fascinated by the redevelopment and also find jobs and community service opportunities within the neighborhood. Some of the community improvements. One has already been 100% completed. The Salvation Army patio and shade structure was installed last year, completed. The city staff is project-managing several projects that are now underway. There is a very, very dynamic mural project along 12th Street. There is a 12th and 16th Gateway Art Project also that is being designed now. There is a River District Wayfinding that was new signage so that pedestrians, bicyclists, and motorists can find their way easily to the River Trail. Matsui Park, an accessible ramp and entry point is being constructed, and the River District Park that I mentioned. So these projects altogether are about $3 million worth of capital improvements. And that $3 million is from the Choice Neighborhoods brand. That really helps to fund the projects in addition to city resources. Here is a photo of the project. Took this a couple of weeks ago. I think this is the drone photo. So from overhead, this one is really nice to see the different varied building types. There is a four-story elevator building that's in the rear. And in the foreground, you can see there's a three-story townhouse product. And then on the left side of the screen, that's a two-story walk-up, a garden-style apartment. So each one of the blocks will have varied housing types. And again, looking at the site now, there is Pipe Fine and Swallow Tail. All of the public improvements have been completed. All of the streets are named after butterflies. So that's the Pipe Fine Butterfly and the Swallow Tail Butterfly. There's also a ringlet. And looking at Block D from Swallow Tail Avenue is the photo on the right. So today, the action that we're bringing to you for approval is to submit an application to the state of California to obtain funding for Block D. This is Block D. Again, back on the site plan, you can see it. If you were looking at the site plan, it's the right side of the project, of the eastern side. And Block D, like the other blocks, will have apartments, townhomes, and garden-style apartments, as well as secure parking. All of the blocks are gated and pedestrian amenities and access to all of the common area, which includes everything from yoga space to resident services, to after-care programs, recreational programs, bicycling, et cetera. Block D is the largest of the five blocks. It will have 116 residential units. The application to the state will also include an application for transit and mobility projects. The transit and mobility projects include a new light rail car and new sidewalks and pedestrian amenities on both 12th Street and B Street, and also near Washington Elementary. The AHSC program that Mayor Steinberg mentioned is one of his work products, includes the recognition that when people live in new apartments or new homes, they are not satisfied to live in isolation just because you live in a new home. So connectivity, mobility, and transit-friendly is really the key to success at Marisol Village. And so we have, in the past, been successful. We applied for the AHSC program on behalf of Blocks B and E two years ago. That was a successful application and made it possible for us to move forward with those blocks. So we are trying our luck again and applying for this round of funding. Looking ahead, we still have, as LaChelle mentioned, two blocks that remain to be funded. Block C, we have secured some funds, but we do need additional gap funds. We will reapply for bonds and tax credits in April. Block D, as we discussed for today, we will apply for the AHSC in June. And if successful, we will then apply for bonds and tax credits. Marisol Village Park and Garden will be completed by the end of this year. December of this year, you will actually see construction starting on the new light rail station, which starts with track realignment. Those of you who travel on 160 or 12th Street will see barricades redirecting you so you'll know that work has begun. And then early next year, as I mentioned, residents will begin to move in. So the project will look like the first buildings are completed before the end of this year. We'll have to do all the inside testing and inspections. And then many happy households. Altogether, 104 households between January and February, and then another 123 households between May and June of next year. So with that, I am done with the presentation and happy to answer any questions.
Are there questions from? Is there public testimony?
I have no callers on this item.
Okay.
Mayor, my hand is up.
Yes, yes, Councilman Harris.
Thank you, Victoria. Thank you. I do have a question for SHRA. Of the 500 or 499 units, and the unit count has changed over time, how many are replacement units for the Dos Rios Project, Twin Rivers? How many are affordable and how many will be market rate at build-out?
Yes, sir. So there are 218 replacement units of the total. And in the total mix right now, there are about 65 market rate units, completely unrestricted of the total 500. And then, so the difference between the 60 market rate and the 218 replacement are considered tax credit units, which are workforce, 60 to 80% of median income.
Great. Thank you for that clarification. You know, I'd like to say that I've been working on this project ever since I got elected from the awarding of the Choice Neighborhoods Initiative Grant. And seeing this go vertical is immensely gratifying. So five years later, you know, we overcame the infrastructure problems, the grading problems. I would say that SHRA and everybody who has worked on this project has been tenacious. You obviously play a long game. And I'm grateful for your efforts because, you know, we're getting some affordable units here and a greater number than we've had in many years. And not only that, it's transforming the River District. And the $3 million set aside for improvements to the River District are incredibly welcome, from the park to access to Matsui and, you know, art. Some really great artists coming out of this as well. So there's an awful lot of positives. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move the resolution and the application for the AHSC grant.
I second that. Got it. As moved and seconded, this is terrific. To go out there and to look at it is just to see all that is possible in our city. And it's really a great project. Thank you to the agency. Thank you, Councilman Harris and Lilly and everyone else. This is really good stuff.
So we have a motion and a second?
Yeah. Is the clerk having technology problems here?
No, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Merchantier?
Aye.
Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Enthusiastically, yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes, that's great. Let's go get that grant. Let us know, by the way, Dozier and team, how any of us can be of some help.
Absolutely.
With that, okay? Let's move to item two, which is the X Street Navigation Center.
So as you know, this is our next major shelter that will be coming online. And I have with me Sarah O'Daniel to give a presentation on that. Sarah?
Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Sarah O'Daniel with the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. And I'm here to do a short presentation on the proposed X Street Navigation Center. Before I start the portion of my presentation, I would like to take a few minutes to introduce a remarkable lady named Ms. Maria Perez. She was unhoused in 2019 and was a guest at the Medaview Navigation Center last year. She has had a remarkable journey and is now in stable housing. And if that's okay with you, I would like to turn it over to her to say a few words about her experience at the center and her journey. Is that okay?
Yes, of course.
Okay. Ms. Perez?
The host has to take our video off.
Anna Darzen.
Anna Darzens?
Yes, the host stopped our video, so we're unable to put it back on.
Mindy, are you able to make that adjustment? Oh, there you go.
So I'd like to introduce you to Ms. Maria Perez. Ms. Perez, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you. First, I'd like to thank everyone for giving me the opportunity to be here and be representative to all the women here at the VOA Medaview Navigation Center. You gotta excuse me, I'm very emotional. It's been a long journey in homelessness for me. And there have been a lot of barriers, domestic violence, which I fled from, from Santa Clara County. But I used to work for Social Services for 25 years. I'm a mother of three, a grandmother of three. I also cared and provided support to my mother, 89, who I just lost last month. And so that was one of the biggest things why that VOA here helped me with regaining my dignity, my home, and hoping to care for my mother. But unfortunately, she passed before I could do that. But, okay, so.
Please take your time, all right? Don't rush, take your time. It's really important that we hear your story.
Okay, thank you. I'm very passionate in utilizing my homeless circumstances to assist other people in becoming self-sufficient and regaining their lives because that's what VOA and the shelter has done for me. It's given me hope, restoration, dignity, self-worth. It's given me a future, and it's given me liberty and justice. And it's also provided me the ability to assist my daughter, who also is going through homelessness for my grandchildren so they don't have to go through the system. And so I would like to thank the VOA program, SHRA, all the funding resources that have been available to these programs because without them, I would not have survived. And I'd like to thank all the employees here who passionately provide the supportive services to us. They are not just employees, but they're our friends. They meet us, each individual person where you're at. They go above and beyond their job expectations. I lost my mom last month, and the VOA people came out there and were a voice for me. So I just, it's not essential, it's not necessary. It's critical. It's critical to any individual that suffers through homelessness and all the barriers that come in homelessness because you have to do so many different things. And you can come here, it's a one-stop shop, which is, it's just mandatory for a person that goes through homelessness to be in a place where they can have a one-stop shop and have all the tools that are necessary to come out of a circumstance of homelessness, domestic violence, and all the other barriers, financial, medical situations. I have an immune system disorder, and they were very accommodating to me with my doctor's appointments and everything. I just, I can't say enough. And I don't even have the right words to let you know that we really need the finance. So we really need these programs to continue to be funded so that we can have hope for tomorrow.
Thank you so much, Ms. Perez, for coming on and sharing your story. It's so important for people to understand, you know, the journey that you've gone through. And we're just so happy to be a part of your success. And I appreciate you sharing that story and letting.
I have a beautiful apartment. I live in Carmichael at the Arden Way Apartments. It's a senior housing complex, and it's a very beautiful place. And it's, you know, I have a couch and a bed. And my children have come out, and we've had family time. And I haven't had family time for 10 years. And so it's really nice. I just, you know what? I'm just thankful to be able to have a normal life again, you know? Be able to now try to be a productive citizen and give back to what, you know, my circumstances and the programs that have assisted me to be able to be in the place that I'm in today.
Thank you. I didn't know if anyone from the board had any questions or comments before Sarah goes on with her presentation.
Just a little bit more about your journey, if you don't mind? I mean, like, how long? How long were you unsheltered for?
Okay.
What the turning point?
Yeah, I became homeless in Sacramento County in 2010 through divorce situation. And I had to go to Santa Clara County because that's where my ex-husband applied for the divorce. So I had to go there. But I was left homeless, houseless, familyless, without finances, anything like that. So actually, there was a person that provided me a vehicle, and I lived in that vehicle. It was a Jeep. I lived in the back of the vehicle with my support dog. And I just stayed by my mother's house. But because she was in senior housing, I couldn't live with her. So I lived in my car, and I basically showered there. I also stayed in, when I lost my car because I couldn't afford to pay for tags and insurance, and I lost driver's license. I slept at San Jose State University when it was under construction. I also slept at The Jungle in San Jose. That was a horrific experience. There's a lot of very violent things that went on there. And then everyone was evicted from there and had to find a new place. And I was actually, you know, pounding the pavement in Santa Clara County looking for rapid rehousing programs. And because I did have experience working for Social Services, I did know a lot about how the programs worked. And I was housed through a program called Downtown Streets Team for two years, from 2015 to 2017, in San Jose on 10th Street in an apartment complex. And they paid my full rent for two years. But I had a domestic situation and unfortunately had to leave my apartment and housing and flee from that. And that's when I came here to Sacramento County and slept in my car and, you know, looked for other resources. And that's how I came across VOA. Actually, I went to Folsom to Powerhouse Ministry, and they actually connected me with a homeless navigator who put me here in VOA.
Thank you so much. Councilmembers Harris and Jennings, do you want to wait for Ms. Daniel's presentation before asking the question or do you have a question?
Mayor, just a brief comment.
Go, go.
So it's about Volunteers of America. They were our provider at railroad. And, you know, they just exemplified service, and they were very focused. They also did Capitol Park and now working down in Medaview. I can tell you firsthand that the people from VOA are absolutely first cabin. They understand homelessness, they understand the needs of their guests and clients. And I can just not say enough good about Volunteers of America. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Jennings, do you want to ask now?
Yeah, I'll be quick because my comments are directly related to Ms. Perez. Ms. Perez, I just want to let you know how much you have encouraged me and all of us who are listening to you. You've talked to us about your journey, and you've allowed us to go along that journey with you and express what you've gone through. And our hearts are pouring out to you because you have been a survivor. You have not only survived, but you are now thriving. And your testimony is a great example for everybody out there who is going through any form of adversity. So I just want to let you know, you have touched my heart. You have given me hope to continue to help those who want to be helped and want to come off the street. You are an incredible young woman. I listened to your story, and it just tells me the kind of person that you are and how you're going to continue to affect others. So I just want to let you know how much you've encouraged me and I'm sure everybody else on this ball.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I just want to add one other thing. You know, VOA, like you said, is an exceptional program. And unfortunately, you know, they want to do so much more than, but their hands, and like in everything, have been tied due to COVID, you know? And so, you know, the duration of what's allowed for a person to stay in homelessness, I believe, needs to be not generalized, it needs to be individualized depending on what the barriers are so that all the tools that are needed to overcome those barriers can be met so that when you come out of it and you are in a home, you don't still have to take care of all that. You can put all that behind you and feel like you can breathe again and that you're gonna make it. It's not gonna, you know, come in and, you know, you're gonna have anxiety or if there's, you know, whatever issues each individual may have. You know, I just think that the duration of the stay should not be generalized. It should be individualized by an assessment, you know, that can be done by the employees to see what the tools are needed and how soon they can be provided or gained, networked, whatever it may be.
Okay. Well, thank you again so much for being willing to share your story. It takes a lot of courage. And the one thing that we need more of in the world, and especially around homelessness, is hope. Because everyone, like yourself, is a human being with a story. And you're worth it, and everybody's worth it. And that's what we're trying to, we're trying to help 6,000 people at least, maybe more. I don't know. You know, the numbers vary. But there are a lot of people out there who can end up in apartments in Carmichael or homes in Sacramento and have jobs and reconnect with family and loved ones and have a good life and then be helpful to others going through the same thing. And that's you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please feel free. I would love to be utilized in any capacity needed to be able to be that hope for someone else.
Okay, well, you provided it today, so thank you. Sarah, is it Daniel?
Sarah?
Thank you, Maria, and also thank you, Volunteers of America.
Thank you, Maria, and also thank you Volunteers of America again for all your work at Metta View. We really, really appreciate it. And it really is to help unhoused adults like Maria that we are going to be talking about this next initiative, which is the X Street Initiative. And so I'm here before you to share some information related to the Navigation Center on X Street that's being proposed and request funding to operate the center over a two-year period. First, I would like to provide some context for the development of this center. In 2018, the mayor challenged council members at that time to identify opportunity to expand emergency shelter options in their district. Various proposals were reviewed, some were feasible and some were not. And eventually in August of 2019, staff brought forward options that included opening a navigation center in the X Street area. In December of that year, SHRA was asked to oversee the administration of this center. And in February of 2020, which seems such a long time ago, but it really wasn't, the SHRA and the city applied and received state funding to operate the emergency bridge housing at the Grove, Metta View Navigation Center, and a small portion of funds were allocated by the state for the operations of this X Street Shelter. And that's really the beginning of our journey with this initiative. The proposed navigation center is located at 2970 X Street, right below the freeway between X and Broadway intersecting with Alhambra Boulevard. This center will house up to 100 unhoused adults using the Housing First model. This number may be modified when operations start depending on the status of the pandemic. City Public Works is leading the construction of this site, which is currently underway. On site, there will be two large sprung structures like Metta View for the dormitory and dining areas and trailers on site for staff and case managers to meet with the guests to identify their individual needs. I just wanted to share with you, if you haven't been out to Metta View, really what the sprung structure looks like and to give you an idea of what's on the inside of it as well. And to me, from a non-technical perspective, it functions like a regular building with all, you know, heating, air conditioning, electrical controls. It just happens to be a sprung structure. On the left side, you see the outside of the structure and also glimpsed into the dormitory with the chairs that are also there in that structure. And on the right side is the dining area with a fully equipped kitchen that's used to warm the food for the guests where they get three meals a day. Here are some pictures of the bathroom trailers, again, bathrooms and showers as well. And so as shown in the pictures at the site, there will be restrooms and shower trailers, including eighty accessible stalls and restrooms. Three meals will be served every day. There are washers and dryers that will be on the property and there will be a limited number of kennels on site as well. Just to share with you the layout of the, the site. The entrance will be from X Street where you see the entrance and at the bottom right side. You enter and are greeted by the guard in the welcome center or it's also called the guard shack, but we like to say welcome center when you enter. The dining sprung structure is really the first thing you will see when you enter the property. Moving along the right side of the property in very small font, you will see that there are administrative trailers for staff offices and case management and limited storage. And then the dormitory sprung structure is at the top of the picture and is close to Broadway. To the left of the dorm structure, in very small font, you will see that there are restrooms and laundry trailers. And in the center of the layout are the kennels. The perimeter of the property will be fenced. Once approval is received from council, we will very shortly issue a request for proposals for an operator who has extensive experience operating such centers. The chosen operator's staff will be onsite 24 hours a day, seven days a week to oversee all aspects of site operations. We will develop a coordinated form of entry into the shelter, just like Metta View, using local partners as referral points into the shelter. There will be no lines outside this facility to gain access into the shelter. It will be through a referral process. We will fully engage local partners to know how to assist their clients gain access to the shelter. There will be intensive case management onsite and also access to partnering agencies based on the needs of the guests. Services include, but are not limited to, intense case behavioral health assistance, anger management, life skills training, linkage to education, employment, financial literacy and wellness resources. There are also funds in the budget for rehousing services to find permanent housing for the guests. The goal of the program is to stabilize the guests with services needed and within a four to six month timeframe to house them in the community. We are also looking to contract with nonprofit agencies that can help the guests get engaged to serve the community, pick up some basic employment skills, which may include cleaning the perimeter of the property. We want to make sure it is kept neat and clean every day and there will be 24 hour security around the perimeter of the site. We are working closely with Vice Mayor Chenier's office to ensure that there is and will continue to be significant community engagement on a regular basis both before and during the center operations. We will provide weekly and monthly information online at our website at shra.org like we do for the other shelters. And this information is, as mentioned, is weekly, but also a monthly bulletin, which will include the number of guests on the property, the meals served, workshops provided for that weekend month and a guest that might be employed and other information. We will work in partnership with neighbors and business organizations alike to develop a robust good neighbor policy and ensure that the selected operator adheres to this policy. And we will also have close coordination with Bridget and her team at the Office of Community Response as well as law enforcement and other departments within the agency. Related to the budget, it will cost approximately $7.7 million to operate the center over two years. Funds are set aside for an operator to be onsite 24 hours a day, seven days a week for two years. A rehousing budget to help guests pay their security deposit and if necessary, a few months of rental assistance. Case managers, of course, would be working with the guests in advance to link them to any income stream that is applicable. There are also funds set aside for outreach work, 24 hour security, payments for utilities and maintenance, purchasing personal protective equipment, establishing a coordinated system of entry as well as administrative costs for SHRA to oversee the center over two years. In terms of the source of funds for this initiative, special thanks to the mayor for spearheading the discussion with Kaiser and receiving a donation of $5 million for this initiative. In addition, as mentioned earlier, we did apply and receive state funds in the amount of $819,100. 1.12 million is a reallocation of unspent Measure U funds from Capital Park operations that have been allocated to this initiative. At another upcoming meeting, SHRA staff will come before you to request the allocation of $762,743 of Emergency Solutions Grant or ESG CARES funds through an action plan amendment for this initiative. So at this time, we are requesting the allocation and reallocation of funds totaling 6.945 million for this initiative and the remaining funds, as mentioned, will come later to you in that action plan amendment. In terms of the timeline, after receiving your approval today, as mentioned, we will work quickly to issue and request for proposal to select an operator by the end of May. We anticipate construction to be completed during the summer, after which time we will open the center. There is a lot of work to be done between now and then, but SHRA has the experience to oversee this initiative based on our experience at the emergency bridge grow, housing at the Grove, Capital Park Hotel and Metta View Navigation Center. I would also like to thank Vice Mayor Jay Chenier and his staff for their leadership with the community on this initiative. And thank you also to the city manager's office, city public works and all staff for their partnership and leadership as we get this underway. I also want to thank the neighbors, residential and business partners who are so engaged in the community to ensure that X Street is a success. So at this time, I will conclude my presentation and request approval of the two resolutions before you. Thank you.
Okay, well, first of all, let me say thank you to you, Sarah, and your team, Michelle, for spearheading this and doing such a good job and staying on this. Really appreciate it. And, and a special thank you to Councilman Chenier, Vice Mayor Chenier, who really has led, this has been a while now, right? And this was not the first potential site. This was the, the best site, but the site we ended up with, but Jay's been on this now for, God, at least two years. Working with the community and the fact that there's relatively little controversy is due to his outstanding outreach to the community along with yours too, SHRA and, and, and our city team. So I want to hand it over to Jay for some comments. I know I got a question or two and then we will hopefully pass the resolution. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'm gonna be brief. I, I really want to thank the community. We have been holding community meetings on this site, for this site, for, as you said, over two years. Little bit of a COVID hiatus in the middle when we were stalled for political reasons, but we really want to do something a little bit different with this navigation center where it, it is really owned by the community. And what I mean with that is that there are so many community-based organizations really within walking distance of the site that can participate in the life of the navigation center and really be supportive of the individuals that will be housed there. So for example, if we're doing workforce development and job training, the Urban League is, is across the street. For food, I'm hoping that American Legion High School with their culinary academy will be able to participate and provide some of the food service, working with the operator on this. Sacramento Food Bank is their next move, is there cash is there when we're talking about the needs for those types of services. So for us and for me, this is really looking at how the community can work hand in hand with the operator to support individuals as they move through this system and hopefully shortly into, into permanent housing. So my thanks go out with all the meetings that we've had to, to the community, to all the community-based organizations that have unfailingly been attending meetings, working on the good neighbor policy and, and just helping to support the program from the beginning to where we are. And, and I look forward to really making this just a highlight of all the services we're providing for the unhoused in how we do it and how we work with community to make it happen. So thank you, Mayor, and happy to, to move this item.
Okay. So, this is great. So this is, you know, 100 beds towards the master plan as well. And, you know, a, as we talked about in January, that when we talk about a master plan, we'll talk more about it this evening. You know, these beds count because we're trying to get to an overall capacity of roofs, beds, shelters, even safe camping spaces in the four figures, in mid to high four figures. And this is a, a part of that. Jay, Vice Mayor, you mentioned the good neighbor policy. I, I want to just sort of and, and I know you're working on a good neighbor policy. I know Councilmember Geddes is going to be presenting tonight on a work he's doing in District Six and a potential template for a good neighbor policy. I think one of the expectations from the community is that if we are able to bring 100 people in at a time here in this shelter and at the same time, you know, thinking about Councilmember Valenzuela's work with Caltrans to address the hundreds of people that are living under the freeway more west that are going to be affected by the Caltrans ma- major construction project. Does our good neighbor policy include essentially trying to provide relief as well for the businesses in the neighborhoods that had joined the freeway so that we don't have large tent encampments under the freeway after we after we follow through on the WX Shelter and the other initiatives relating to the Caltrans discussion? That's more of a rhetorical question maybe, as opposed to a specific question to anyone. But I think the answer needs to be yes. Part of what we need to show folks is that we can get people off the streets. Or at least if they're not off the streets, they're camping in a designated area where they, where it's safer, where it's organized and where they can more readily access the services that will allow them to get inside as well. And so all of this needs to be thought through together. Anybody want to, Jay, you want to comment on that or anybody else?
Well, I, I, I think there's, sure, there's a couple of things to that, Mayor. As you know, one is we have made a commitment to the community that the individuals that will get really first crack at, at being in the shelter and, and getting services will be those who are directly within sight of it and, and underneath the freeway and WX heading towards the river and then underneath Highway 80 as, as it goes east. So my hope is that those individuals who've been living with, with a lot of the encampments that are directly across the street from them and in their neighborhoods will get really the, the first amount of service as we move through the, the hopefully four to six months to get to permanent housing for a lot of these individuals. We'll be able to move further down the freeway, the WX corridor and for, further up Highway 80. We've tried to work and, and we've had attendance from, for example, the Broadway Partnership. A lot of the businesses around there into our advisory committee meetings so we can work with them. They helped draft this good neighbor policy. I think that we need to do everything we can to bring additional services and, and you saw in the budget that SHRA put forward, there's money for additional security. We need to make sure that there's money for additional cleanup in the areas. I know we're switching some providers on that. But I, I think that this needs to be a concerted effort, again, to work with the community around there to make sure we're doing what they think is needed in addition to what we know is needed for those who are unhoused who will be in the navigation center. I don't know that we have complete plans going forward, but the commitment again that we've made is once an operator is chosen, that operator will be able to meet with the community on a lot of these items that you've raised.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Geddes?
Yeah, thank you. And I don't want to steal Ian Barlow's thunder tonight talking about it, but to that point, it has, the development of the goals of a good neighbor policy is to bring all of those points of view and to ensure that the, the good neighbor policy is not one directional. It's not just about the navigation center. It's about creating and ensuring collective success. And, and that also means, you know, a, a conversation with our own community about how, how we respect each other and those who are unhoused. So it, it, and that and the development of those goals came about with bringing both our, our property owners, our neighbors, the unhoused, the folks working with the unhoused on the day, on the day to day and also the service providers. So it is, it, it is a, a bigger group, but it is that collective success and to that point, to ensuring that people are not just out in the street anywhere, that it's we're providing a path for folks and success for the communities where our centers are at.
Okay, was there anybody else? Councilmember Harris?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You know, the, the biggest problem we encountered at Railroad was predators preying on the homeless at the center via vending drugs. And certainly with the security component of a good neighbor policy, my feeling is that that has to be addressed for the benefit of the community and the benefit of the homeless individuals residing in the shelter. It's, it's a really key component and one that we can't take our eye off of. That's it.
Thanks. I'm glad we raised that question again. That's the thing we need That's the thing, we need to keep talking about it, because we want to be successful for everyone here, as their members have said. All right, we have a motion and a second. Did we have any testimony? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
I have no callers on this item.
Okay.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Hi.
Councilmember Harris?
Hi.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chenier?
Hi.
Councilmember Gedda?
Hi.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
Mayor Steinberg?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. That passes nine to nothing. That's great. Let's move now to item number three, which is the Promise Zone update, our last discussion item of the day.
We've had a chance to really talk about homelessness in shelters, but the work of S H R A does extend beyond that. The Promise Zone is initiative that we've worked on for many years. And so we wanted to give an update, and specifically to talk about one of the newest initiatives that we've kicked off for homeownership, for those people who are really, you know, struggling to get into homes. So I have with me Julius Austin, who is going to do that presentation.
Hello. Good afternoon, Mayor, council members, staff, and community members. I am Julius Austin, the Sacramento Promise Zone Coordinator, which means I direct the daily operations of the Promise Zone under the leadership of Tyrone Roger Williams, our Deputy Executive Director of Development here at S H R A, and of course, under the ultimate leadership of our Executive Director, Michelle Dozier. I am excited to share some highlights on the Promise Zone. We are definitely, he's still here, alive and thriving despite the pandemic, and we're fortunate enough that we have hundreds of partners who have really great impactful projects, programs, and partnerships. But I'm just going to highlight a few of those. Some of the more recent highlights. Most of you know that the Promise Zone is a 22-square-mile area that is part of North, Mid, and South Sacramento. And I will leave it short in regards to describing what the Promise Zone is, because I believe you all are fully aware. But let's get to the highlights. First, I would like to highlight the Sacramento Promise Zone Sustainable Communities Collaborative, which is comprised of the Sacramento Kings, Sacramento Black Chamber of Commerce, SMUD, UC Davis, and the City of Sacramento. We partnered together to award Eco Alpha, which is a facilities and engineering organization. We provided them $60,000 for their energy bearing program. The energy bearing program is a really awesome program that is going to provide an eight-week training opportunity in facilities, energy, and the facilities, energy sector, excuse me, for 15 to 20 trainings. It also includes great opportunities for job placement, and we're excited that they decided to focus that program solely on members of the community from the Sacramento Promise Zone. The application deadline for that program just ended last week, so we'll be looking forward to some awesome updates from Eco Alpha to learn about who was accepted as trainees for that program. The next highlight I'd like to share is the Sacramento Promise Zone Book Giveaway. I mean, think about this, 30,000 books. Councilmember Gera has seen them in person, but imagine 24 giant pallets, four-by-four-by-four pallets, full of books, brand-new books. We're talking about Dr. Seuss, Disney, et cetera. Really, books that are going to get kids excited about reading, engage in reading, and that will translate into increasing literacy scores. And we are working in partnership with the Sacramento Literacy Foundation. I just want to really highlight the fact that the Literacy Foundation, with April Javist, provided the funds to purchase these 30,000 books. And we have worked in partnership with La Familia. Also, the Fruit Ridge Community Collaborative, Pro-Youth and Families is leading that effort, and working in partnership with our two school districts in the Promise Zone, both Sac City Unified School District and Twin Rivers Unified School District, to coordinate a really humongous effort to where we use volunteers to help unpack the books, organize the books, and bag the books. We're placing five to eight books in bags so that every child from kindergarten through second grade who attends a Promise Zone-area public school will receive their own bag of books. And we're coordinating this with principals. We had engaged with all of the principals so they can come and pick up their books. And we're glad to say that that was completed last week. It took about a month to unpack all of the books and coordinate things with the principals. It was a heavy lift, but we really had some great volunteers. Also, due to La Familia already having funds, they were able to help make this a job opportunity for young people. So it's another great opportunity to provide work training for young folks. Here on the slide, you can see, kind of on the upper right-hand side of the slide, we have a screenshot of some of the kids who have already received books. We have about 14 kids from Babcock Elementary over in Twin Rivers Unified School District, and they were able to jump on a Zoom and showcase their books and say thank you. It was really great to see that this is what it's all about. It's about seeing those smiles and empowering young people. The last highlight that I would like to share with you all is the Sacramento Community Home Ownership Initiative. It's the initiative that Michelle kind of introduced for our Sacramento Promise Zone highlights. And it is something that is really, really exciting. It is a real game changer with partners with the Federal Home Loan Bank in San Francisco, also Union Bank. Tyrone Roger Williams did some really great work. And checking with them to see the Wish Program, which provides opportunities for folks to receive up to $22,000 for down payment and closing costs. Folks who qualify by having up to 80% AMI. But this program was dominantly focused in the Bay Area. And Tyrone did great work in checking, "What about Sacramento?" And we recognize that, I think, over a five-year period, only about four individuals from Sacramento had taken advantage of this opportunity. And so, that's going to change because of the work of the Promise Zone, dominantly the work of Tyrone. And we are excited that there have already been digital workshops. Folks can apply. They can register at www.sacto.chi.com. It's there on the slide. The next workshop is tomorrow, and it already has 400 registrants. The workshop on March 27th already has 200. But that doesn't mean that folks should be deterred, because folks can still register. It's a first-come, first-served basis. But those folks who register and learn what they need to do to purchase a home will be able to take advantage of it. And those who are maybe applying to register and are not even ready yet to purchase a home, I encourage them to continue to do so, because the Realtors Association will continue to be engaged with those who register and attend the workshops, and they will continue to work with them on things like financial literacy, also on debt reduction and debt management. And so it's something that I encourage everyone to take advantage of. I also think it's good to note that, though this opportunity is available to everyone, and it is an opportunity that is on a first-come, first-served basis, we did do some efforts to do specific outreach into the Black community in recognition that members of the Black community are far too often left out of these types of opportunities and also were greatly impacted by housing discrimination efforts in the past. And so that is the end of the highlights. I would love to answer any questions, but I would first like to encourage everyone to learn more about the Promise Zone at sacramentopromzone.org, and then also follow the Sacramento Promise Zone Facebook page to find out about awesome, free and low-cost resources from the hundreds of great partners in Sacramento who are making great impact.
Absolutely. Thank you, Julius, for that presentation. And also a big thanks to Tyrone Williams, who has been a tireless advocate for Sacramento in making sure that the resources that are available really come to our community, which is really what the work of the Promise Zone has done. So we're available, but one thing, how many people thus far have registered and/or attended the workshops?
I would have to check on that, but I know that for the next two upcoming workshops, there are already 600 people registered.
600 registered, and we've already had hundreds that have gone to the first two workshops as well. So, really looking forward to it, encouraging people to attend those workshops, even if they think they're not ready because of the financial literacy education, to really help them get ready will be available to them. So we're open for any questions that you may have at this time.
All right, very comprehensive, very important. I got Councilmember Jennings, Harris, Vang, and Gedda. Go ahead.
So I don't know if that was the order, but I'll go, since you called my name first. A great presentation, Julius, really doing good work out in the community. Two questions on the workshop. First question is, is it limited by capacity? Or can you have as many people that sign up, participate? That's one. And are each of the workshops independent, or do they build on each other?
So the first, the workshops are independent. I know that the capacity is not unlimited, but they do have a very large capacity. I apologize, I don't know the exact number, but I could get that figured.
Okay.
But certainly, there is great capacity. As I mentioned, for the workshop tomorrow, there are already 400 people registered. And so they have a large capacity to handle a large number of people who would like to register and attend.
And if I haven't participated in the first two, I can participate starting tomorrow.
Correct.
Thank you, sir. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, Julius, thank you for your work on this. The Assistance in Home Ownership Program is really tremendous. You know, it's always been known that homeownership and the pride of homeownership is really what makes communities stable, and nowhere more needed than in the Promise Zone. I noticed in your graphic that the house was made of dollars. And, you know, I'm building a house right now, and so I think I'll take your lead and roof it with Ben Franklin's. So thank you for the suggestion.
Okay, Councilmember Vang?
Thank you, Mayor. Julius, thank you so much for the presentation. Councilmember Jennings did ask one of my questions regarding, is the program only limited to Sac Promise Zone? And I think I heard loud and clear that it is not limited just to the zone, so that's great. And it's really awesome to hear that you have a record-breaking number of folks that have already registered, so that's really great. My question is maybe more, I'm just curious, because I was just taking a look at the Promise Zone right now. I just pulled it up, and I recognize that Valley High and Metaveau is not in the Sacramento Promise Zone, given just the high poverty and high need as well. Wanted to know if you can address that, Michelle. I know, I know it's, maybe it's the federal boundaries, the census tract. But, you know, as someone who represents South Sacramento, I know Valley High and Metaveau has dire needs. And so I noticed that they were not part of the Sacramento Promise Zone. And just thinking, as we're doing the programming, to make sure that these communities in these neighborhoods are not left behind.
Yeah, so the parameters of the Promise Zone were created by census tracts, as you mentioned, and it was based off of kind of the federal application and what the criteria was. But don't let that deter you. The Sacramento Promise Zone is here to bring more resources and more federal engagement. And we look at it as those folks who work, live, and play in the Promise Zone, those people who are impacted by the Promise Zone are included as well. And so if you're not in the direct boundaries, we still can help take advantage of all of the things the Promise Zone is here to do. And then, you know, we care about the entire region. And so if I can help you in any way by connecting you to partners, connecting you to federal resources, federal funding, going after federal grants, I'm here to do that. So please, don't let the boundaries deter you.
And also in establishing the boundaries at the time, it was based on census tracts, and they had to be contiguous, and we couldn't jump over a census tract to get to another one. So, and I know Councilmember Carr used to always talk to me about this all the time. But yeah, that was a part of the federal requirements and setting it up.
Thanks, Michelle. Thanks, Julius. Thank you for all your hard work.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got Councilmember Gedda.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to thank Julius and also our city team as well, because when we got the 28 pallets delivered early, it also was a day that it was expected to rain, and our forklift folks weren't going to show up for another couple of days. So I do want to thank Julius and all the volunteers, and then our city team from Yipsey who showed up and helped us move those books, and La Familia for providing storage location for us to be able to ensure that we didn't have a rainy day with books there. But 30,000 books in the hands of a lot of young people who are looking for some adventure there through reading. So thank you, guys, for your work and the fact that we focused on our Promise Zone.
Thank you. I just want to publicly thank you for saving us that day. Councilmember Gedda is being modest. He showed up when we needed him the most. And he's really monumental in his effort, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gedda. Is there any public testimony?
I have one caller on this item. May I have my first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good afternoon, council and the chair representatives. Thank you for all of your work, your hard work. One thing I'd like to just bring to the attention of the council and the group are the median income of housing in Sacramento County is $438,000. We have, we have $22,000 going towards the availability for purchase, but there's no inventory available at that low level. We have approximately 15 offers on every home that is at that level, and most of those homes are being outbid by cash buyers from out of the county. So I just want you to be aware that we don't have inventory levels. We may have a lot of qualified buyers, but nowhere for them to purchase. So that's just something to think about, and we're looking for the council to create more low-income housing that is available for folks at that price point.
Thank you for your comments. I have no more callers, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, there's no vote on this item, correct?
Correct. This is just a report back.
Okay. That's excellent. Thank you. Is there an executive director report or council housing authority comments, ideas, and questions? Or public testimony on matters not on the agenda?
I have one caller for matters not on the agenda.
Go, go.
Thank you. May I have a caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yes, this is Lambert Davis of To The Bay and Back Cheesecake. This is going to be an unusual call from me. I think the city council is doing a lot of great things that I read about lately. And that's good. I saw something Sunday in the Sacramento Bee where it was talking about institutionalized racism in fire department and how that was coming out of the city. So there's a problem down there, no buts. And, you know, we're attracting a lot of attention. I'm sure City Hall is aware of it. And the good thing about it is, when you are out there trying to do something really good, you know, good karma comes your way. And so... And so, you know, I will be right back at you next week. But I did want to say that there's some good things that they're doing. I think that's great, what they're going to bring into city. 120-something million dollars. I hope To The Bam Back Cheesecake get a check from the city instead of having to go through the Black Chamber only to get any kind of money. That's not a good look. And I'm glad to hear that the Black farmers received some billions of dollars for and from this Relief Act. That's wonderful news. And of course, Vice President Harris and Biden is the one pushing it, and the great Nancy Pelosi. I have a lot of respect for her. So, To The Bam Back Cheesecake, two-thirds vote, and we can get our submitted proposal funded. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I have no more callers.
All right, no council, housing authority ideas or questions? Dozier, any final comments? Okay, good meeting. We will reconvene at 5 o'clock as the city council. We are adjourned. Thank you.